Hey John.
John?
Hi. I have Kimlyn. Let's see. Can I turn the video on? Start video. There we go. Here, somebody.
He's on the.
I don't know where you're supposed to. Jessica.
That's good enough right there.
Supposed to pick it up from the owl, isn't it?
There's no video. I'm just saying, I love it, there's no video.
Oh, no video.
So just this voice.
But she's on, she's on there. She's, she's there, Kimlyn.
Okay.
Listening.
Hi.
Hello.
Sorry, guys, my car is, is out of the way, so I couldn't come up in person, but I'm here.
Well, sorry, we don't have it, have it set up for the system here in the hour. At least we got you.
Right.
We're back fiscal report? Yeah, oh, no, we haven't, remember, okay. The minutes of the first meeting would have been the February 8th one. And are there any problems with this? Second, no, I can't. All in favor? Bye. The second one is the one for March 1st. And that, that's that one page. One came through.
Change the meeting time.
You've changed the meeting time, right? And all in favor?
No, I'm not.
You moved, you already moved it, okay.
Okay.
All in favor? Very good, okay. Fiscal report. Um, our usual $2,000 budget. And I have spent 756, no, that's the number, no, that's the number, yeah, number of flags. No.
No, no, that's the price.
Huh?
756.
756, so we've got $1,244 left in the account, which we have to get rid of. Now, I would have no problem with that. Um, that end of fiscal year is July 1st, June, yeah, June 1st.
30th is July 1st. That's the fourth of the year.
Okay.
The town, the town.
All right.
Do we need more flag, more markers?
It doesn't hurt to put, you know, spend some money on that and keep them.
It'd be better, especially if you're saying that they're hard to get right now.
Yeah.
Have some, order some ahead.
Right, yeah, we can do that. The other, um, the Amos Stanton Cemetery has a tree in it that's gotta come down before it starts killing stones. Um, and we, Ben has found a gentleman, actually a whole family of them, that can, uh, who take down trees. We, and they're good, these people are good, they, we have five trees in our yard that had to come down and they, they're, they came in and, and
Zapped them out.
Yep, zapped them out.
Who's her name?
Um, EJ Trees, is that the name of the place?
E, EJ.
EJ.
Smith.
EJ Smith.
Yeah, he's a local, uh, ledger.
Yes, he's great.
Don't worry.
I mean, the, the whole family is, is. Yeah, it would be $450.
For the one tree?
One tree.
Then you say in the, you emailed out that there was more, multiple trees needed to come out?
There are, um, but we have to now find somebody who's gonna do, do it. There's two trees in the Newton Cemetery. They have to come down. E, EJ can't handle them because he doesn't have a crane. And this thing, this is me, yeah, and so we're gonna have to find somebody.
Can you get a lift in there?
In that cemetery, I think you can, or they get, actually, the trees are right here, this is the stone wall. I mean, yeah, he, they, they have a lift, there, it won't be a problem.
He, he, EJ, he's, he's got a, a bucket truck. But he says mine doesn't have enough reach to get to these trees. Because you can't get into the cemetery, you gotta park.
But it's up, it's up in, uh,
He said there, there are other tree guys who have
No.
Bigger, bigger units with enough reach to get.
Small cemetery.
And he mentioned a couple of names, tenants, I can hear them.
Oh, you got it.
And then there's another one. But I haven't really got.
You got H and H. Uh, landscaping, he does trees, Rich Heinz.
Actually.
But the thing about the
Yeah, we'll have one issue.
Captain, Amos Stanton. You can't get a vehicle to it, okay?
It's gotta be done by hand.
Whatever you do, you gotta carry your stuff down there and figure out a way to, because this tree, the way it's leaning, because we've taken down trees, cemeteries, because you could drop them, not on tombstone. This one is a good size and it's, and it's leaning where all the stones are. I'm saying, oh, boy, but, but he's got block and tackle and stuff that I, I'm convinced they know, they know how to get this tree down without demolishing.
Put a climber up?
Any of our.
Going to put a climber up?
Yeah, and they will take it down, cut it up, haul the brush over to the side of the cemetery to clean it up for 450 bucks. I don't think it's a bad price.
Yeah, it, well, what I'm familiar with is a thousand dollars a tree. That's usually the going rate, so when we got heard these guys were let, let loose down in Galesbury.
But now for Newton Cemetery, you're talking about a crane, and a crane is a horse of a different color in terms of cost.
Those are gonna cost.
Those are gonna cost.
Are they threatening tombstones as well?
Yes. Yeah.
Like, are they leaning or is it the branches that are?
It's, it's a rotten, they're both rotten, they're two together. And they're rotten trees.
I'm just asking.
Yeah, yeah.
They're ash, ash trees. You know what's happening to the ash trees? They'll probably disappear. I'm not over.
You know, so, I think, so we've worked out there before. You know, taking the trees down and repairing it with headstone. Um, what I'm driving at is the one I'm assigned to, the one cemetery I was assigned to.
Yep.
That always has, branches always fallen down, I mean, it's right on the corner. And it's, it's ringed by trees all the way around it. And I was just over there last week cleaning up. I must have picked up about 30, 40 branches, varying sizes from, you know, sticks to this big around and as long as this table. And they didn't hit any tombstones. Headstone.
Luckily.
But they're all around.
Yeah, yeah.
So those trees are dying over here, is what I'm alluding to, I'm not sure what's causing them to die. They're just, they're just tall old trees.
Yeah.
And with the heavy winds, they're just, you know, rattling and knocking them down while they're, while they have no, uh, sap going through them. Once, once, once they bloom, they're okay. It's just, it's just at this time of the year, this is when.
Are they alive?
Yeah, I mean, all the trees are alive that are remaining, I'm just saying is, when you get way up high at the top, that's when they start thinning out. A good breeze comes through it or rattle and they're shaking, bouncing off of each other and that's when the branches start now.
You can't, you can't really get a boom truck.
No, you can't get them, I mean, only on the exterior road, uh, you know, the one road that services them, but it's not that, I mean, I think we, over time, I think we've taken enough of them down to limit the damage.
If the tree is alive, there are, um, tree cutters who will climb.
Yes.
And trim like the dead grain or take it down.
Yeah.
If it's, if it's bad.
Yeah.
So that, that would be something.
No, I'm, I'm, thanks, I'm always watching that.
You wanna?
I'll take.
Check into that, I mean, see if you can find somebody and get a price.
You might wanna check with your state arborist to see if he has any, those of any local arborists that do that kind of stuff.
But I think our main focus being to ash trees that we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, yeah, this is an example that we're talking about, it's not uncommon in a lot of cemetery.
Right, right.
I'm just pointing it out, that's my particular one, it just seems like every year there are branches always falling down.
Yeah.
I'm just, we just spent $10,000 to remove five trees and one of them was almost six foot around. And, uh, I used H and H, Rich.
Okay.
Um, he does have access to lifts and units that may be what you need.
Yeah.
You, you can just talk to him and show him what you want, see what he you get a quote, that's it.
Yeah, maybe we should get a couple quotes, uh, from people that can do it. Or find people that are willing to do it, get a couple quotes to bring to the June meeting. Yeah, but not spend all the money, it's like, save some of the money.
Okay.
So that we can do that.
You might have to make a choice too, you said if you take, you have 1,200 left, something like that, if you have 450 for one tree, you got like
It might have to wait till the next fiscal year.
Yeah, oh, yes. As long as we have a handle on it.
We are, yeah. Need a quote.
Yeah.
And then if we don't spend that money, we can just order a bunch of flags and stuff, so we have a stockpile, flags and markers. But I think they can pick for those trees, we should.
We, yeah, they go, they come first, did I, um, then then we'll get a new budget and we start all over again.
Yeah.
Very good, okay.
We don't, we want to spend that money, some of the money and get those, that one tree.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think we should, I move that we, um, spend the, what, $460 to get the tree removed in the, I don't remember.
It was, um, $450. $450.
Okay.
And I, yeah, we.
Move that we spend the $450 and get that tree removed.
And she's seconding. Martha's second.
Okay.
All in favor?
Bye.
Bye.
Bye. All right. I choked.
That's the Amos Stanton Cemetery.
He's ready to go, so.
Yeah.
We actually go to get the quote. Also, that we get, um, two, at least two quotes.
For the, for the Newton Cemetery.
Newton Cemetery.
Okay.
Minimum of two quotes.
And you say you could get one?
Uh, well, I, I can see, we just, somebody needs to take charge of it. Um, but we can start with H and H. Because we, and see if they have availability to do it.
Okay.
I know somebody that can do trees, I just have, would have to see if they have the ability to do that. No, because I haven't seen it.
Somebody gonna make a motion?
She just did.
Okay, you did, right.
Seconded.
And she seconded.
Anyone else gonna, everybody?
Fall in favor?
All right.
Was it Newton Cemetery?
Yeah.
What would be nice is if
Some will head broken, broke.
If there was a way, like, these quotes, I think for that one, it's gonna probably be over. for that one, it's gonna probably be over the eight hundred we have.
Yeah.
But we don't have a way to carry over money.
Yeah.
The town.
Yeah.
Is there a way to talk to the town, however, and like say, this needs to be done because threatening like historical property and we need to get it taken care of? There, there's gotta be some kind of way to talk to the city about that.
Either that or talk to the person that gives you the quote and say, I'll pay you so much now and I'll pay this.
Well.
After the first of June.
Yeah.
You could do it like break it into two pieces.
Yeah.
And his quote. Like, the quote is for one tree. We do it this year. And, and July, we get a quote for the other tree. And, you know.
Yeah.
I mean, you can do some things like that.
Yeah.
To.
Quote to take down a trees and a quote to haul everything off.
Yeah, they're gonna do it in one shot.
We can try and work with them. It's just, we at least need to start with a quote. Let's make it see how much.
Right. That's, yeah.
Well, we get at least the bottom line, what it's gonna be, we can try to figure out how to.
Yep.
How to use the money. How to come up with the money. Yeah, okay. All right.
Go creative, go keep it.
All right. All business. The William Cemetery, William, William Cemetery is still no medals coming in. They don't have any. I'll keep trying. See if, but I think that's gonna have to be delayed if we keep doing trees and other things, you know. Flags is most important. Yeah. You know, the, the medals. Markets that I talked about, right, yeah.
On the on water or?
That's what they say. I mean, everybody's saying that. It's on order, it's on order. Okay. Um, and our, our whole business, we did find the, the man who's gonna cut the tree at the Emma Stanton Cemetery. And I will be handing out your flagging materials today. Uh, let's see. Oh, um, one of the things that we need to discuss is when we, are we going to, are we gonna work, use the same schedule we used last year for flagging? Like, um, what are the, what we get, what are your Saturdays for? Um, October. October, the Saturdays for October, they, is, is this start with the second and the?
What, what are we doing?
Flagging the big cemeteries.
May.
May.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's okay, all right.
Okay.
May seventh is the first one.
May seventh is the first one, and then it's the fourteenth and twenty first up to twenty ninth. So what, last year, what we did was we started with the first one. And then if that it rains, we'd go to the next one. That was the schedule that we set up and, and it, for us, it worked out very nicely this year. Last year. So why, you wanna do the same thing this year?
Cemetery, would you do first? Like to meet, do we meet in October, do we meet?
Yeah, I think we think meet, we will work in that one first, the big one, the Avery Stoddard.
That's the first, right?
Right. Yeah.
So what, what are you talking about? May seventh?
The seventh.
If the weather cooperates, if not support.
At what time?
It happens to be Mother's Day.
It does.
Does it?
Yeah, it is.
That's gonna be a rough one.
Uh huh.
The following day is Mother's Day.
And Union.
The following day is.
Eight is on Mother's Day, maybe.
Why don't we do it to fourteen?
Start the fourteen.
I think.
That'll give us three weekends in a row to try to.
If it rains to all of them, then we just.
Um, so we're planning on starting.
Nine.
Another thing is, I can try and see if I can get some of the kids, well, not kids, the young sailors. That work, in the office I work in, is the volunteer coordinator. As long as I know a time and the, they.
I have a daughter and a grandson that are very anxious. They like, they did it last time and they want, can't wait to come, do it again.
We're, we're in better, better shape this year.
Yeah.
Because we've got two new, two new members. We've got a full, full complement now, so that's.
That helps. Yes, yeah.
Guys. I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I didn't know, being brand new, are we assigned each cemeteries or do we all work together at each one?
We work together with each one and there's only two involved on, on that particular weekend.
Okay.
The Avery Stoddard, and we'll start with that one. That's the biggest one and let, yeah, that one. And then the next one is the Gales Ferry.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Normally, um, we're done by about noon.
Yeah. The two, we can get the tourism done.
Yep, no worries, I'm ready.
Okay, good to hear. Oh. All right.
When you want to start, when you want to start then?
The fourteen.
Fourteen?
Yes.
Or the nine?
The fourteen.
Fourteen.
At fourteen, at nine, at nine in the morning. Yes, you will, you will get one.
You want me to try and see if I can get some of the sailors?
You think they can behave, yes.
Yeah, I can call them me and my members, so.
Okay.
How old am I? Like eighteen. That's my sailors that I teach.
Oh.
So like anywhere from eighteen to twenty nine.
That'd be good.
Yeah, I mean, they should be respectful.
People who follow directions. I think, I mean, I wasn't around, but I know that some of the problem they have with the kids. I was just hearing that story and saying to myself, we need to, it's good if we have kids, and you give them directions. You have to break them into smaller groups of kids and add them.
Well, the ones that volunteer for stuff like this are ones that actually participate.
Yeah, yeah.
So say they're, they're at service.
And if we have a lot of people, then you have scouts, you can partner them.
Yep.
And that's, that's a really good thing.
Yeah. Okay, that's good. All right. Any new business to come before this?
Absolutely, before we go to the news.
Oh.
Just want to make sure we've covered it. So on the committees, anything for the flags, I was gonna, we're gonna put in how it works. We talked, we talked.
Oh, you, the flags are the the adopters. They need to explain the adoption process to our new people.
This is something, uh, press, pressy stuff. I'm laying adoption highway.
Yeah.
Find oats. One of our, one of five abandoned. About twenty five. And, and it spends, uh, overtime. Two cemeteries. About two adopt. And.
Before the pandemic, all of them were adopted.
Yeah.
How does a group adopt?
What, what, what adopt it needs is you, we will give you to start with a cemetery in reasonable shape. And we've got them all to that point.
Yeah.
There were some that were overgrown from forty, fifty years of nothing being done. And Boy Scouts helped with some, some of those, getting them in shape, different organizations. But to just maintain it, um, it's not, they're not lawns, manicured lawns, obviously. Most of them are back in the woods off the road. And just, just to, you know, sticks, branches that fall down continuously. Weed whacking the, the growth that, that, that will come up twice a summer, maybe. Three times.
Was, has expressed interest.
What's that?
Jessica, her question is, how does a group do that? And what they do, what happened with the VFW? That man that called me and I gave him your phone number and he called you, and he does now the VFW, alleged VFW or Gales Ferry VFW does call the Roche Cemetery, isn't it, on the corner, Sandy Hollow, one seventeen. So they do it directly through Vinnie.
I, I know our VFW is just willing with them. At least they did, you know.
So that's another. Another one.
I'm still maintaining the one my son did for Eagle Friday. Do this for no one. Fourteen years, fourteen years.
They want, they want to adapt the cemetery. You have one of them with that.
Yeah.
There are two left over right now.
Get them intact.
Get them.
Yeah.
You're, you're fine. She needs a, a phone number?
I think you would still read his phone number.
Oh.
Yeah.
I might be able to get both of them covered, actually, have it uncovered by the, like, one of the organizations on base. On the other.
That's good.
We've got two that they can choose.
Oh, we're talking about adopters, you know, and I did have that issue with poison ivy.
Yes.
And because if, if we can't get someone to, to take on those cemeteries, it's gonna fall to us to do it.
Yeah.
You know.
Maybe there was someone at one meeting, it might have been you, Paul, I don't know who it was, who was talking about some recipe having to do with vinegar and salt, and I don't know what. Personally.
I think that was Harold.
I do, yes.
Sounds like Harold.
I have to deal with poison ivy at my house, okay? My, my plan is that I pull it out and when it comes up, I hit it with Roundup. Now, I know a lot of people don't like Roundup, but a little.
It's my favorite go-to. I want to.
I mean, let, let's face it, most of these cemeteries aren't even near houses. They're back, you know, back off in, in the woods.
Side roads.
So the.
So if nothing has, if it's not been taken care of, you would not object if I had a little spray can and handled the stuff around the gravestones that we're attending to myself.
But if we do use anything like. If we do use anything like that, I mean, what we've done is put up the, the signs, pesticide. Approved, you know, applied to other people at least are aware of it.
I mean, that's for, that's someone, if you want, if you want that level, you want someone to take responsibility at that level?
It's.
You have to pay someone.
No, what he's getting at is you just have to put up a sign that says pesticides used in the cemetery. Sort of somebody that may have an allergy or whatever, won't just run into it. It's, it's, there's no liabilities. You're just telling everybody pesticides have been used.
Like, being alerted and alerting other people.
In my, I'm uncomfortable. I couldn't, here now, say I would accept.
No, I understand. I usually just use the little yellow sign with a black sticker, you know, when I go do my lawn. Like, when I put stuff down on my lawn, I put right there in the corner. I buy one mail box pesticides and use. Yeah, yeah.
You don't see it, you don't see it.
But if you're not comfortable with it.
Yeah. And, yeah.
And we're not talking about around your house, just on the cemetery.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'm just using that as an example.
Yeah, I understand. I was just clarifying.
I'll tell you later, I won't answer right now.
You can pull the weeds and come anywhere you want, we just don't have to know that.
You can always do it the old-fashioned way and pull it out of the ground, you know.
The real old-fashioned way.
That's, that's hard.
Yeah, yeah.
Blowtorch news.
Yeah.
That, that's it.
Blowtorch is amazing.
I won't put that down.
No.
Actually, the blowtorch is really good for the, for the stone walls.
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, all the vines and.
All the vines that grow in there, you go in there and you just.
And we have a lot of stone walls.
I'm curious, can, can that task be given to the volunteer fire department?
You might ask the volunteer fire department, see if they're willing to.
It's a training exercise.
Right, as a training. And use a blowtorch to clean whatever vines are growing through the cemetery walls. You might check it down.
Yeah.
And when in doubt, ask. That, that's it. You're no, in no better place than where we started. No, we have no more business. Um, our next meeting is where to go. Papers here, driving crazy. June fourteenth.
I'll, I'll have the organization contact me.
June fourteenth.
As of right now, I can't tell you, I will and won't be here. Trying to plan out, figuring our camp route sometime in June.
Okay, our next meeting is June fourteenth, and we will be picking up the flags that have been used, then so on and so forth. We clean them, right?
You got them now? You got them here today?
Yep.
She's saying bring the old ones.
Bring the old ones back.
Yeah.
And where can I pick them up since I couldn't be there in person today?
I have them, yeah, all right.
Where could I, can I pick them up at the town hall? My husband's a council member, so we've got a, he's got the key, so I can pick it up there if you need to, or.
Would be convenient for her to have them here, for her to be a council member.
Yeah, he'll be there tomorrow night for council meetings, though.
Okay, all right.
Is that okay?
Yeah, we can leave, maybe we can leave them off here in the council room.
Beautiful, perfect.
Yeah, I'll try, I'll, I'll see what Roxanne will, bring them in for Roxanne, give it to Roxanne, and she can pass them on.
Now, are we all bringing some individually? Is that what's going on?
Yeah, yeah, I'm giving you a, you have, we, we have about thirty, twenty, well, twenty-five to thirty cemeteries that are separate from the two big ones, and they, they have people who will come in and put flags, you, or you will be putting flags, and you take the old flag out and you put the new flags in. And then you bring the, the old ones to me, I have given you the new ones.
Okay.
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 You're kidding, you'll, you'll get the.
Oh, we also get a sign.
Yes.
Yes, cool. All right, a signed cemetery. Each one, I think, has four.
Four or five.
Four or five, yeah. Pardon?
In the past, yeah.
Yeah. Okay?
Yeah.
I already know which one of them.
I do, I do.
Make a motion to adjourn the meeting if no one has any.
Second, third.
Fourth.
One in favor? Vote in favor.
Yeah.
All right.
Now, am I supposed to send something to you?
You're gonna send me the, the justice.
Oh, just, just from the. All right, I'll just scan.
Oh, I'm sure.